Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this board meeting, regular meeting for September 25th, 2025, to order. If you could please join me for the pledge of allegiance and salute to the state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures.
Moving on to the next item of the agenda will be approval of the regular meeting agenda.
So move.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Flores. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five, uh, limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda, and the forms are in the county manager's office. Do we have anyone for public speaking?
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you so much for this opportunity to provide comment today. I'm Luke Koenig. I'm a Grant County resident, and I'm also the local representative for the conservation group, New Mexico Wild. With attempts to sell, transfer, and otherwise wholly remove public lands from public ownership, public lands have been recently under existential threat in a way largely without precedent in American history. Fortunately, these attacks on public land have so far been thwarted by bipartisan opposition at all levels of government, and that's because public lands are an indispensable part of local, state, and national identity. And so I want to thank the Grant County Commission for taking up the mantle locally today. While I do think both versions of the resolution being considered today retain the core spirit of opposition to the blanket transfer, sale, and privatization of public lands promoted by land seizure proponents, I would like to express my strong support, in particular for version two. I think version two keeps it simple and responds directly to the real and discreet threat facing public lands. On the other hand, I think version three muddies the water and needlessly adds some confusion and is a bit outside the scope of what such a resolution is really about. For example, the emphasis on FLIPMA, or the Federal Lands Policy and Management Act, in the "be it resolved" paragraph strikes me as a bit odd and irrelevant, considering that FLIPMA only applies to BLM land and not Forest Service land, and BLM land only makes up about a third of federal public land in the county. So it's a bit strange that the county would seemingly be endorsing management consistent with FLIPMA for all federal land in the county, whereas FLIPMA is actually a law that only applies to BLM land, which again is only about a third of the federal public land in the county. And I also just want to point out a minor typo in V3. It is the Federal Lands Policy and Management Act and not the Federal Lands Management and Policy Act as is listed in the resolution. I do believe that when the first version of the resolution was taken up, it was tabled due to some confusing language that may have been outside the scope and purpose, and I think this time around, V3 does the same thing. So I strongly encourage the commission to consider passing version two instead, which keeps it clean, simple, effective, and to the point. Thank you so much for allowing me to provide comment, and thanks for your support for our public lands.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public input?
Good morning, commissioners. Everybody, I'm back being a fan. I'm gonna keep up this, uh, about the members and not being able to ride side by side. I got the understanding now that you commissioners can fix this. You have the power to fix it, is what I was told. I'm gonna come back to what I found on the game department's website. You can't put part of the road in. You gotta put it all or none. And they did that to fifteen, and they did that to thirty-five. I don't understand why you sure can't ride a side by side from fifteen thirty-five to the cliff dwellings. Uh, I, I'm sure Captain County would go along with it. They're pretty good about it. I, I don't see nothing wrong with going down into the cliff dwelling. I don't see nothing wrong with riding it in the members. And it, it, there's people riding up and down there. They don't seem, I, I need to go to the judge and have the magistrate court and, and pull over a request. How many's been cited on this? Because they're going, uh, there's side by sides riding up and down there just about every day. But my point is, I was told that you guys can fix this, one way or the other. I, I'm waiting to see. I, I don't understand. I know there's procedures you gotta go through and stuff, but I don't see nothing being done, period, or not wanting to be done. I think I'm gonna go back to the, back in the eighties, nineties. We accuse the commission of being, of members being the forgotten stepchildren. Well, I believe that's what the problem is. We're the forgotten stepchildren. I mean, because it, it's done everybody in the main community of members dirty. Where they got that set up, where they're at Magnificent, that's private property. You can't park there. I went up there the other day. I had to go miles up on a Forest Service road to find a place to pull over with my pickup and trailer to unload my stinking side by side. This is the problem. And if you go to a campground, you're gonna pay. If you pull off on Forest Service and it's grass, LEOs can write you a ticket, because you could start a fire. I mean, this whole thing don't make any sense. I mean, and right there in members, what's wrong with riding with side by side down the road that's got a license plate that says it can run on pay roads, and you're paying insurance on the sum of buck, just like a vehicle? And I guarantee that side by side of mine is tougher than some of these new cars.
You have one minute.
It's all I need.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public speaking?
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Pete Rankin. I've been a resident of New Mexico since 1987 when I was thirteen. I've been a resident of Grant County since 2009. I'm honored to be here today to introduce the class of 2026 from Aldo Little Charter School, where I teach. I've taught in New Mexico Public Schools since 2000, and this class is U.S. Government and Politics. So we're here today to observe local government, and, and I want to express gratitude to y'all for, for serving and representing our community. And I also want to apologize in advance that we need to leave at ten o'clock to keep our class schedule, so please don't take offense when we walk out. If you guys are still talking, then again, thanks for your service, and these students have a lot to offer. They, many of you know several sites in our community, for example, the Waterworks Site that has been a collaboration for many stakeholders in our community. All of these students have worked there in various capacities to make it such a great space for our community. A lot of them, raise your hands, guys, if you serve on the trails crew, how about garden crew, about muralist crew, about water harvesting. Okay? So these are crew, YCC crews in our community, where these students help to, through the YCC program, to improve life for everyone in Grant County, and I'm really glad to introduce them today, and again, thank you for your service.
Thank you, and welcome. Do we have anyone else for public speaking?
Chairman, the very right gave me some little bags to give the Aldo students. Do you want me to do that now? Or?
If you want to, yeah. No, I'll just go on with the, the reports while you do that.
Okay.
Nobody else for public?
Thank you for coming.
Nobody else for public speaking? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to elected official reports. Madam clerk, do you have a report?
No.
Sheriff?
Thank you, Chairman. No, I think.
No, okay. The more elected officials, okay.
Thank you for your work in the community. It makes me feel very happy to meet you. We're so excited to have you. Do you want to have a hug? Perfect. Thank you. And if I could give you a hug, I'd be glad to.
Moving on to the consent agenda, the individual burials. We'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
So I made a motion, Commissioner Medina, second the motion. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to new business. Under the inventory deletion approval?
Good morning, chairmen and commissioners. This is from the dispatch office. There are very obsolete equipment, some old printers that we need to get rid of. Stand for any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Flores. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to item C, be a quote for IT project.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. What you have before you are two quotes and a scope of work that is assigned with this regarding two efforts within the IT department. These were items that were approved on the current fiscal year budget, so this here is providing some information, and of course, seeking approval and signature for these particular contracts. The first project is an effort for us to move and migrate our information, our data, from our current productivity platform over to a new one. So at present, we utilize Google Workspace, so all of our email calendars, contacts, that information, as well as Drive, is managed via the Google Workspace environment. So the idea on this primary effort here is to move away from that and migrate all of this information, all of our data, over to a Microsoft platform, a more business-appropriate, I would say, platform, moving us to Office 365. So that's what that first contract is in regards to. The second one is in regards to revamping our backup infrastructure. So at present, we do have a backup environment, but the idea behind migrating the data to a new platform is one that'll allow us to have much more space to be able to back up our server environment, as well as affording us the opportunity to back up things such as our endpoints or desktops and laptops. So not only does it have that capacity, but it also has some enhanced security features that we'd like to take advantage of regarding how we store and preserve our data. So under the assumption you have any questions about this one, either of these projects, let me know. I'll stand for those questions.
So we have two quotes that we need to approve, one for the 135, a little over one hundred and thirty-five thousand, and the other one for a hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Correct, yeah. Requesting signature for either, for both of these contracts.
These were budgeted into the initial budget and beginning of the.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve as presented. Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Flores. Do we have any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to item D, be the approval of the Corre Caminos 2026 budget.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners. I wanted to give you a quick update, since we will be ending our fiscal year next Tuesday. Corre Caminos is projected to finish fiscal year '25 at approximately seventy-six thousand six hundred rides. It's a slight increase over last year, seventy-three thousand four hundred and eighty-four, and we will be coming in just under budget. We are still awaiting the delivery of three buses and the one van that you approved a few months ago. There's a recall on the van, and DOT won't allow it to be released to us until the recall is completed and it passes final DOT inspection. We have no ETA on that one. The buses should be shipped within the next month or so, so the final modifications should be completed in the next two weeks, and then they will go to DOT for final inspections. Moving on to my budget for next year, along with my proposed FY '26 budget, I have provided you with the projected final fiscal year '25 budget for your comparison, and I have made notes on the line items that have any substantial changes for fiscal year '26. I have budgeted for a five percent increase for all Corre Caminos staff. This will set our regular drivers at sixteen eighteen per hour, CDL drivers at seventeen oh five per hour, and my lead drivers at seventeen sixty-two per hour. The only salaries, line items, that are Corre Caminos employees are the director in the administration portion of the budget, and then in the operations portion, the supervisor, dispatch, and the drivers. All other salaries are Grant County employees who are billed for in-kind match purposes. Also, as a reminder, the only financial burden on Grant County is the eighty thousand in cost share. The rest of our funding is federal or cost share provided by Silver City, Deming, Luna County, Grant County WI. And I stand for any questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Flores to approve, second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any further discussion? Yeah, I'll hold off on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution R-25-57, Resolution for the Preservation of Land and Water Rights. I'm gonna turn this one over to Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Chairman. As you know, the meeting before last, we, we looked at a resolution, but there was a bit of confusion around some parts of the language. So just to remind everyone, the point of this is really just to make a statement in support of federal lands remaining public, and public lands staying in public hands. And, you know, we don't want to get too into the weeds about exceptions, but compared to the first resolution we saw, version two does include a little bit of language around small parcels, because there are already rules that govern the exchange of small parcels when it makes sense. But I did take out some things that aren't really applicable to Grant County, like there was a reference to the Antiquities Act, which that's more of like a national thing. And so again, this is really just, in, in my hopes, it would be a, a show of support from Grant County, saying that we have a lot of federal lands here through BLM and Forest Service. We treasure those, and we, and we'd like to keep them that way. So do you want me to read the resolution?
Yes, if you don't mind, so we know what two versions are there, please.
Sure. So R-25-57, Resolution Supporting Continued Federal Management and Stewardship of Public Lands Within Grant County. Whereas public lands managed by federal agencies such as the U.S. Forest Service and the Bureau of Land Management hold significant recreational, economic, sustenance, cultural, and spiritual values for the citizens of Grant County who desire these lands to remain accessible to all. Whereas in Grant County, the Bureau of Land Management oversees three hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred sixteen acres, and the Forest Service manages eight hundred sixty-six thousand thirty-nine acres, totaling approximately one million two hundred five thousand eight hundred fifty-five acres of federal public land. Whereas the costs associated with managing these lands are a national responsibility, making federal involvement crucial for the long-term health and sustainability of these resources. Whereas there are ongoing attempts to transfer or sell public lands, which undermine the importance of multiple uses of these lands, including but not limited to grazing, energy development, and recreational activities. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Grant County Board of Commissioners hereby expresses strong support for the continued federal management and stewardship of public lands, opposing any efforts to sell, transfer, or dispose of these public lands within Grant County outside of pre-existing authorities such as the Small Tracks Act that allow for the conveyance of small parcels of federal land, where such parcels remaining in the federal public domain present unique management challenges related to encumbrances, community infrastructure, access, land ownership, boundaries, and/or similar issues. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be sent to members of the New Mexico Congressional Delegation, the Governor of New Mexico, and the relevant federal land management agencies. In witness whereof, we have heretofore to set our hands and seal of the county of Grant to be affixed in Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, this twenty-fifth day of September 2025. So that's version two, and version three is slightly different. There's a couple of, of things I noticed that were added, the terms mineral extraction and timber sales, and then as we had a public commenter notice, the reference to Federal Land Management Policy and Management Act. So I, I'll let Commissioner Shally maybe speak to version three.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens, for introducing the, the resolution in the first place. And the changes that I offered were to really just make the overall concept slightly more appealing to a broader cross-section of our community, but I, I can support either version and, and am happy for, to support a motion that you would make.
So I would move to approve version two.
I second it. So I have a motion by Commissioner Stevens to approve version two, I have a second by Commissioner Shally to approve version two. Do we have any discussion, commissioners? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item F, be Resolution 25-59, or R-25-59, Resolution of Grant County Ratifying an Agreement with Southwest New Mexico Council of Government, including membership appointment for execution. And before we move on, who do we have out there?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, for the COG board members, we have Andrea and myself, and for the RTPO, we have Joseph Hoggan and Jason Lockett. My only recommendation would be on the RTPOs to switch out Jason Lockett for Mike Rocco. This is all transportation road-related, the RTPO, and Joseph, Andrea, and myself are willing to continue serving in this capacity if that's your desire.
Okay.
And so this resolution just does that and agrees to be a member and paid the dues.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue as we're going, following the recommendation of adding Mr. Mike Rocco in place of Mr. Jason Lockett.
Second.
So a second by Commissioner Stevens. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to item G, which is Resolution R-25-60, be a budget adjustment request bar, Ms. Andrea, or Ms. Betty?
Good morning, chairman and commissioners. Betty is going to present to you today. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. This is the budget adjustment request, and it's for, all the first ones for the EMS Fund for Capital Outlay. This is the increase for the revenue and the expenses. The second one is gonna be for the law enforcement, the Cooperative Law Enforcement Grant, and this is gonna be an increase, too. The third one will be for the senior, the commitment for the senior services, and this will be an increase. The next one is for the dare program, and this will be an increase for the revenue and expenses. And the next one is the, for the ridge, sorry, the ridge road improvement for Phase Two. I believe this was approved last commissioners' meeting for the bid for Bohannon. And then the next one is for the, a grant for the public warming system improvement, and this will be an increase as well. The next one is a grant for HMP update, and this was a grant, and it's an increase. And, sorry. The next one is a grant for the incident commander radio interface. This will be an increase, and the next one will be for, it's a grant for the generators, and this is also an increase. And the next one is the Dos Gregos Fire Station. This is an MFA loan, and it's an increase to the expenses. And then the next one is the Corre Caminos, their budget award, and it's an increase for the revenue and expenses.
Ms. Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Motion.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Flores, second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to item H, Resolution R-25-61, Resolution of Support and Financial Commitment to Corre Caminos. resolution of supporting financial commitment to Corre Caminos.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is the eighty thousand dollar financial commitment that Kim mentioned in her report, and this has not increased in a number of years. So this is our, our portion for funding.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Stevens. Do we have any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say that I appreciate that our contribution is relatively small, that there's a lot of federal funding, and that I do think it's a valuable service. I remember a long time ago, I read an article about how, how Grant County had public transportation, and it was featured in a national newspaper as being an example of a small town that provided that service to its residents. And I think we should be proud of having Corre Caminos.
Thank you, Commissioner Medina.
Yeah, I just wanted, I didn't get a chance to make a comment a while ago. She made a presentation. The numbers are impressive. For being a small community, the numbers are impressive. I just want to thank her for making sure she's making that place right.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else, Commissioners? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to Commissioner reports. Commissioner Flores, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, just a couple of things. I've noticed, we had an email from a, from a citizen, but I've also noticed, we addressed this issue early, early in the year, I think, and it was about yards with a bunch of trash, junk, tires, things, things like that. And I think we need to always be on top of things like that, because it seems like, and I'll be guilty of it, too, is once it's taken care of and we think it's taken care of, then we, we sort of just put it on the back burner. But I've also noticed an increase in people using RVs, old mobile homes, things of that nature to use as a, as a residence on their property. And that becomes an issue, because a lot of these dwellings don't have power. They don't have septic, they don't have water. And these folks that are staying there end up staying there for a long period of time. And it just attracts a lot of other junk, garbage, things like that. And at the same time, it's bringing down the property value of people surrounding them. And that's the same issue that we dealt with, with the, the yards that never got cleaned up. And we had to get our code enforcement officer to go out there and, and issue them citations and follow those citations through the court. And I, I, I think, I would like to ask the Commission here in the near, near future to adopt an ordinance similar to Luna County's Ordinance Seventy-Seven. And that is basically establish the standards for manufactured home transportation installation, RV regulations. And what it, what it does is basically tell them, you know, they need a water well, they need septic, they need electric pole. There's a limit of how many days that those folks can stay on that property without being punished or, or cited. And it just establishes clear and enforceable standards for us to enforce. We ensure that all dwellings are, do have the basic necessities, electricity, water, septic. And I think it's a, just a safe standard for everybody involved. And I, I don't know where they're using the facilities at, or they're going to the house next door, or, I, I don't know. But it does promote public health and safety. And I, I think, I think we owe it to, to the citizens that we are on top of things like this. We, we, we did it for the junkyards, and I think now this is another addition to that junkyards is people living in, in, in mobile homes, old RVs. Because, yeah, none of us want to walk out and see two or three RVs at our neighbor's house that folks are living in. But I would hope that the, that we as a Commission could adopt an ordinance here in the near future to, to put some teeth into that and enforce that. The other issue, I, not the issue, the other comment I have, Mr. Chair Commissioners is, Commissioner Stevens and I had a meeting with Solid Waste last week, I think, give or take. And, and a good idea was brought up. We realize, or I realize, and I know Charlene has brought it to my attention, too, is our fees have not increased since nineteen ninety-six. I think, is that correct? Okay, thirty years. I'm a realistic person. I, I understand fees are going to have to increase. And the constituents and the folks that have called me, I've told them, you know, maybe a gradual increase over time, but it, it's not going to be a, a two or three hundred percent increase at one time, I hope. But a suggestion was brought up in that meeting that maybe we can do it as a Commission. I hope that we can do it, or, or think about it, is that if folks are getting city water, which, like, I live in the county, I get city water, and I'm getting billed for it, then they can also pick up our trash and get billed for it, just like if you lived in the city. So you would pay similar to the price that folks are paying in the city. And I don't, I don't know what people pay in the city. It's been a long time since they've lived in the city. But I, I think, like, like Commissioner Stevens said, it would be an easier pill to swallow for folks for that increase, because now they don't have to pay, I don't have to pay for that contractor to come pick up my garbage every week. So you're getting your water and your garbage picked up, and that eliminates that thirty-seven dollar bill or more that I'm bound to pay. And it's going to be less than thirty-seven dollars, according to the folks in that council, in that meeting. But I, I obviously realize that this is just the onset of discussion. There has to be some, some sort of MOU set up. But I do think it's a, a great option that we can look at. We get with the city manager, our county manager. And I think, we as a Commission, I think, can do that, once everything is set in place. But hopefully we can do that. Last thing I, I failed to mention a couple of meetings ago, but I just want to say thank you to Charlene, Andrea, everybody and their staff for the hard work they did on the budget. I know there's different revisions. It, it just seemed to go, from my opinion, very smoothly. I appreciate the meetings that we had to talk about it each meeting, and we did a little tweaking here and there. I know Joseph was involved. Everybody that was involved, and forgive me for not mentioning other people's names, but I appreciate everybody on that staff for working on the budget. We met our deadline, we got it passed. I've been in other boards, and it hasn't been such as a, a smooth running as this one. But thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Flores. Commissioner Medina, do you have any comments?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Shelley, do you have anything?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Shelley. Commissioner Stevens, do you have anything?
Yes, thank you. A couple of things, like Commissioner Flores mentioned. We did have a productive, solid waste authority meeting, and we're still in the discussion phase, but it was really helpful how they broke down the cost. You know, there is a perception that people pay twice, that they pay someone to pick up their garbage, and then they also pay for the landfill. But then when, when we saw a breakdown of how the bills are, those are two separate charges. And so people aren't really paying twice, but it, it feels like it. And we also looked at how much money is being lost currently, which gives us a realistic idea of, you know, how we need to get back on track. And again, echoing the Commissioners' comments about, there, there is opportunity, I think, to reduce the administrative burden of the, the billing process, too. So, so we'll report back to you and keep you all in the loop with that. Another, oh, another thing related is I've had a couple of constituents talk to me about recycling. And next time we meet, we're going to look at the total financial breakdown of how much money is lost with recycling, and maybe some different ideas about how it could be separated out, how it could be streamlined. So that's another thing that's interesting. And then I had a, someone reach out to me from the Town Council just saying for our assessor's office, making sure that those new tax rates that we approved, that those have been communicated to all the municipalities. I wasn't sure exactly what the county's process is for communicating those tax changes, but, and I know our assessor's not here today, but that was something I wanted to pass on. Another call I got was a resident who was very happy that the, the road where she lives is being chip sealed. But she did say she didn't know what was going to happen. And so just anything we can do to make sure that people know when roadwork is going to be done in their area, just because she had an appointment, she wasn't able to get out for a little while. But she did say that the road crew was very friendly and helpful. And then tonight, I know, is a meeting with the State Land Office. It's one of those public meetings to talk about those public land transfers at the Convention Center at six. Yesterday, I went to an Early Childhood Education Care Department Council meeting that was here in Grant County. I guess it rotates around the state. There's six every year. And it was here at the Convention Center. And that was really interesting. They were talking about the rollout of universal childcare and how that will impact providers and communities, and looking at trying to help facilities get up to speed to accommodate more children, particularly infants and toddlers. Because we already had good access for that pre-K age, but the youngest children, that we expect more, more younger children in seeking those services. So there's a, a lone opportunity, which is pretty interesting, to, to get buildings more equipped to handle more children. And then I went to the kickoff meeting for the Community Wildfire Prevention Plan. And that was well organized, and there's going to be a series of public meetings. There was already one on, was, was that Tuesday? So there will be a couple more, I believe. But just getting input about what residents' needs are as far as defensible space and trying to reduce, you know, yard waste and tree waste, things that make us more vulnerable to fire. So just wanted to mention that, and I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. I do have a couple of things. Earlier, we had public speaking, and there was a concern there at whether McKnight turned off concerning, you know, vehicles can't park there anymore. It was fenced off, which rightfully so, it is private property. They have every right to do that. But just to let you know, I did have a conversation with Ms. Tony from the Forest Service, asking her if they could look into providing parking space further up. Because a great point was made, you know, we do have grass, high grass in some of these areas, especially in, in the summer areas, the heat, the drought, you know, it can cause some fires. And, and if the Forest Service, and I, you know, this comment I'm not sure about, you know, the issuing citations for parking off the road. I think my suggestion was doing something like they did there at the drive-in. Make a, a little area where people can park their trucks, trailers, and take out their UTVs, four-wheelers, whatever, to have access to the roads and the forest land. I've not heard back on that, but it was mentioned, it was brought up. It is a good point, and I appreciate somebody bringing that up to us. And I totally agree with that piece. The other thing I want to discuss is, you know, a lot of people, tax rate and what we voted on last meeting, those things come down from the state of New Mexico. And as you heard, those things we have to vote for, sort of like our, our elections, approving the, the results, the canvas. There's some choices we don't have. We have to do that. So that comes from the state. Just wanted to clarify that. Has nothing to do with Grant County Commission raising taxes. The other part that, and I think, just so you all know, and CPAR, is CPAR in your district? Your district? Had a call, conversation, that that road's pretty bad. Did talk to Mike Rocco. They, they're real busy right now with chip sealing, but I guess there's some people in there that are complaining. They said as soon as they finish doing what they're doing with chip sealing, they take a look at it. So just so you're aware of that, since it is in your district. The other thing that, and I didn't want, I didn't want to bring this up with the resolution supporting federal management and stewardship of public lands within Grant County, version two. I'm, I'm glad you guys brought it up, and I thank you for all the work that both of you did on this and, and bringing this to the Commissioners today with these two versions. But, you know, one piece that I do struggle with, and not from you two, and not from the Commission, it's in, in the first sentence, where it says, "The citizens of Grant County desire these lands to remain accessible to all." You know, it needs to be accessible to all. But I've noticed here in the last couple of years, before you guys, three of you came in, me and Commissioner Medina had to deal with the closing of the Grapevine. You know, it took us a while to get that open. That has a lot of culture to it, has a lot of people in Grant County using it. You know, so to me, I, I have trouble swallowing "remaining accessible to all", because it seems like every time we sit up here, and I'm a big advocate, I understand the spirit. Don't, don't take me wrong. I understand the spirit of the resolution. But where it says "remain accessible to all", it seems like here lately, access wants to be taken away little by little. You know, we had a presentation. You have guides, outfitters, that, you know, through attrition, doing that. How are we saying "remain accessible to all" when we continue to cut out certain groups? And I've said this, and I'm going to continue to say this. You know, I think that this resolution also not only needs to go to our congressional delegation for the state of New Mexico, but also needs to go to the Forest Service. Accessible to all, not just pick and choose or selective enforcement of who gets to use it and who doesn't, who's going to get cut from using it, who does this. You know, at the end of the day, to me, if they take away outfitter, guide permits through attrition, people are still going to be out there hunting. That's the bottom line. They're, they're going to be doing it. They're, they're going to be doing it, taking their friends. You're not going to reduce the population at all, you know. The other part to this is, you know, if we're, if the Hila National Forest is getting inundated from guides from up, from northern New Mexico, we've got to look at something like this and see some common sense. Do we divide the, the state in quarters? Do we divide it in half? What do we need to do? But at the end of the day, that also says, well, you know, it's not remaining accessible to all. When they shut down the Grapevine, that wasn't being, that wasn't remained, didn't remain accessible to all. When we start talking about a bunch of other things around it. So to me, remaining accessible to all is yes. Manage it. We have laws. We have the Foresters, Bureau of Land Management, but keep it remaining accessible to all. We get caught up in, well, they want to sell that. Well, I'm not for selling any of the, of the land, and I appreciate everything that you guys did. But at the end of the day, we need to fight the other side of it is, we don't want them to sell any, any, any land, but at the end of the day, we really truly need to keep it accessible to all. And I think that this resolution needs to go to them, because I don't know what's going to hit us next. What now? You know, it went to a draw system or hunting, you know, it cut down on some of that. Maybe there, there needs to be some common sense type approaches to some of that. So that's sort of a little problem, not what was put in the resolution, but I don't think some of these bureaus are understanding what remaining accessible to all is. So that's my two cents on that. But again, I appreciate the hard work you guys put into this, and I appreciate that this went the way it did, so thank you. And I have nothing else. Did you, anybody forget anything? We good? We good, county manager? All those? All right.